Welcome. We're continuing our study of the Gospel of Mark. My name is Dave Hippel. We're in session seven. Our topic tonight is chapters thirteen and fourteen of the Book of Mark. Looking at chapter thirteen, a couple of points to keep in mind as we look through this. The key word is "watch." Let's watch for that as we go through. The type of literature, it's an apocalyptic type of literature, and it talks a lot about the destruction of the temple. And I want to talk also to point out the importance of the temple to the Jewish people of the day. It's come back to that type of literature. It's an apocalyptic sort of literature, which means revelation, revelatory. It purports to point to, to reveal mysteries, mysteries of the future, mysteries of the heavenly realm. Often concerns last things like death, resurrection, judgment, rewards and punishment, the afterlife. Typically filled with Old Testament references and allusions. Like this piece here tonight, for instance, in chapter thirteen, it starts off with Jesus on the Mount of Olives. Zechariah the prophet saw the Mount of Olives in one of his words from the Lord. Let me read that. "Behold, a day of the Lord is coming," says Zechariah. "For I will gather all nations against Jerusalem to battle, and the city shall be taken and the houses plundered. Then the Lord will go forth. On that day his feet shall stand on the Mount of Olives, which lies before Jerusalem." And Zechariah spoke these words, just like a lot of the Old Testament prophets and like this revelatory literature we're looking at, where the prophet kind of saw a mountain range in the near and a mountain range in the far. And as he described this, he's describing incidences that could occur and would occur perhaps in the lifetime of his people. Perhaps Jesus' first coming, perhaps Jesus' second coming. This type of literature is often called the "literature of the dispossessed." Often arises among relatively oppressed or alienated people, like the Jews were at this time under the thumb of the Romans. The Book of Revelation, as I mentioned, is a New Testament example, written later in the century with the Christians under the thumb of the Romans at that time. It too is filled with Old Testament images and allusions. Many preachers through the years, through the centuries have shied away from this sort of literature. Lots of opportunities for being misled. We've certainly experienced in our time and age, people who rise up and say, "Oh, Jesus is coming. See, I've got it, it says so in the Bible. This isn't the first time that's happened in our lifetime through the centuries." That's a common, many have been distracted. I think we need to keep in mind that key word I mentioned, "watch." Watch and pray, be prepared. In Luke's version of one of the passages tonight, he ends by saying, "Blessed are those whom the master finds awake when he comes." I think the important thing about the second coming of Christ, about this type of literature, is to be awake. To be awake, to be working about the Father's business when he comes. So let's talk about the temple a little bit. The temple at the time of Jesus was Herod's temple, as it was called, built by him. Quite a magnificent structure, especially for that day and age. The Hebrew people, in looking at the Hebrew scriptures, we learn a lot about how important that temple was. It's like a microcosm of the entire world, of the creation. Matter of fact, when the Old Testament describes a creation, it often uses temple-like words, building-like words, structure words. Like for instance, at the end of the book of Job, God comes to Job and describes the creation in words like this. He says, "Where were you when I laid the foundation of the earth? Who determined its measurements? Who stretched the line upon it, or what were its bases sunk? Who laid its cornerstone? Or who shut in the seas with doors and prescribed bounds for it with bars and doors?" You know, these words kind of linking the description of the creation with the structure of the temple. So in their view, the temple related to the entire world. It was where God dwelled, the center of worship. It's the place God chose for them. Moses in Deuteronomy is, and in Deuteronomy, when Moses is talking to the people there, they're still in the desert, nearly ready to enter the promised land. And Moses says, "But you shall seek the place where the Lord, your God, will choose to put his name. The Lord will make his habitation there, and there you shall go. There you shall bring your burnt offerings and your sacrifices." Remember, the first covenant under Moses involved animal sacrifice. It was all supposed to happen at that place, at the temple. In particular, like for instance, here's a passage that says, "You shall not offer the Passover sacrifice any place except the place the Lord, your God, gives you. The place where he chooses to make his name dwell. There you shall offer the sacrifice of the Passover, and there you shall eat it." Referring to the site of the temple, the place in Jerusalem that God chose for the temple. This place was vital, a vital center of the Hebrew religion in the Hebrew scriptures. We find a long tradition of reverence for the temple as the dwelling place of God. And I say all this to let you know how impactful it was when this place was destroyed. When we look at the Psalms, we see that reverence. The Psalms say, "O Lord, I love the habitation of your house and the place where your glory dwells; for the zeal of your house has consumed me. Another place, how lovely is thy dwelling place, O Lord of hosts! My soul longs for the courts of the Lord. Blessed are those who dwell in the house of the Lord, ever singing thy praise." I know when I read the Psalms, I tend to spiritualize those references and think, well, he's referring to that mystical presence of God, that high point in our life, that time of prayer. But I think the Hebrew people took it more literally and looked at it as a description of that very temple, that very place. "I was glad when they said to me, 'Let us go to the house of the Lord.'" I was glad when they said, "Let's go to the house of the Lord, pray for the peace of Jerusalem." "My personal favorite is this one. For a day in thy courts is better than a thousand elsewhere. I would rather be a doorkeeper in the house of my God than dwell in a tents of wickedness." Now, some of you know that I like to serve as usher, as hospitality minister at Mass. So this last one about, "I would rather be a doorkeeper in the house of my God," really, really speaks to me. That I enjoy doing that. By the way, if you enjoy that, like if you also would rather be a doorkeeper in the house of the Lord than dwell in a tents of wickedness, or recruiting for more hospitality ministers, you can sign up next week. So this temple, very critical, very important to center the heart of the Hebrew religion. And now, in seventy A.D., we come across the second time in Jewish history when it's destroyed by the, and this time it's destroyed by the Romans in seventy A.D. Now, there's considerable debate about when Mark was written. Most scholars say about seventy A.D., plus or minus, maybe before seventy, maybe after. But nonetheless, the second time it's destroyed. I want to talk a little bit about the first time the temple was destroyed. I put up there sort of a timeline, I got that from Ascension Press. Well, let's talk a little bit about the history that was going on at that time. This is like five hundred years before Christ. Where those two lines separate on the far left of the screen is where the northern part of Israel separated from the southern part of Israel, they became two nations. And the top line kind of disappears before the bottom one. So the top one, they get carried away into captivity, conquered by their enemies and carried away. Now, that was a common way that the victorious armies would behave. The victorious empire would conquer the lesser empire and then take all the leading people, all the primary citizens away and disperse them through the kingdom to suppress that people so they couldn't rise again. That happened to the northern kingdom, and those people, the ones that were left, eventually became the Samaritans of Jesus' time. That lower line is the southern tribes around the Jerusalem area. They lasted somewhat longer before they succumbed to their enemies and were carted off into captivity. Their captivity lasted seventy years, and that yellow portion at the far right is when they were released. Their conqueror had been conquered and subsequently, they were allowed to come back to the land, and the temple was rebuilt under Ezra and Nehemiah. The Old Testament does talk about why the temple was destroyed the first time. I found a slide from an old Bible of mine that displays the deterioration of the people or of the kingdom. One guy looked at that and said, "It looks like a bunch of toes." But actually, it's an attempt to show the state of the rulers or of the people's hearts, where the top of the chart, they're living righteously, and then as time goes by there toward the right, they deteriorate into sinful behavior and then sink into idolatry. And the Old Testament points out that as they sunk into sin and idolatry, that's when the prophets, by the way, rose up and said, "You gotta stop this, gotta start living righteously, gotta quit running after other gods and worship the Lord. If not, bad things are gonna happen." Well, bad things did happen, the temple was destroyed. And now, in Jesus' time, or after Jesus' time, in Mark's time, rather, the Romans came and destroyed the temple yet again. And of course, as we know, it has not been rebuilt. That seventy, eighty destruction of the temple, very traumatic. The Jerusalem itself was destroyed, the people, many people were killed, died of famine and so forth. The Christians survived, a lot of them left the city before the siege began. Very traumatic, the Old Testament sacrificial system ended. The Jewish religion reformed itself centered on the synagogues, as we see today. So I mentioned the debate about when Mark was written. Some think before, some think after, this occurrence in seventy A.D. So the question would be, is Mark reflecting on the destruction of the temple or predicting the destruction of the temple? An example of that debate is that section about the desolating sacrilege, there in Mark thirteen, where this desolating sacrilege is set up in the temple, let the reader beware. That could be reflecting back on an event during the first Maccabees, about 167 B.C., where King Antiochius sought to transform the temple into a temple of worship to his God. Matter of fact, he set up a pagan altar on top of the very altar of the Lord in the temple. Or it could be a reference to an attempt by the Roman emperor Caligia in about the year forty A.D., where he attempted to set up a statue of himself in the temple. Or it could be a reference to that mysterious figure in the future, certainly in the future of Mark, the Antichrist. Paul describes him a little bit in Second Thessalonians, where Paul says, "This is the man of lawlessness, yet to be revealed, the son of perdition, who opposes and exalts himself against any so-called god or object of worship, so that he takes his seat in the temple of God, proclaiming himself to be God." So Mark could be reflecting on an event in his couple hundred years previous to him, or an event in maybe his lifetime, or an event yet to happen. Or somehow knitting all of them together in his reflections here. So there's some bookends on either side of chapter thirteen we should keep in mind. The beginning of the chapter, the disciples ask, "Tell us, when will this be and what will be the sign, thee saints?" And at the end, well, in the middle, several times, "Watch. Look out for yourselves, be aware, there'll be people trying to deceive you. Watch, pay attention." And at the other end of the chapter, Jesus says, "But of that day and of that hour no one knows, not even angels in heaven, nor the Son, but only the Father." So I leave chapter thirteen there and point out that, as Luke says, "It's best if the Lord finds us awake and doing the Father's business when he comes, whenever that is. Watch, pray, be prepared, be ready, pay attention." Let's transition now into chapter fourteen. We find there sort of an outline of the chapter. First, there's a discussion of the conspiracy to kill Jesus. Then we talk about the anointing of the woman at Bethany. Then the Passover and Last Supper narrative, the denial in the garden foretold, then the Gethsemane garden itself. Betrayal happens, denial happens. Let's talk about the conspiracy a bit. At the beginning of the chapter, we see that tension between the people and the rulers. Jesus has honor among the people, they like him, they respect him. The rulers, not so much. And here we find actually they're definitely plotting to kill him by stealth. They say, "We don't want to do this during the feast lest there be a riot." They were afraid of the people. Let's keep that in mind, we'll see that come back later. The anointing by the woman at Bethany, she's there on the far left pouring her alabaster vial of perfume on Jesus' head. Our commentary asks a question about this episode. They're asking, "Is this Simon, is this the same leper maybe that was healed in chapter one? Is this woman the mother of Simon Peter, who was raised up in chapter one? Could this possibly be them in their changed or healed or raised up state?" Good questions, food for thought. Jesus comments on the anointing. He says, "She has anointed my body beforehand for burial." Remember earlier where Peter challenged Jesus, this is right after Jesus predicts his passion, and Jesus says, "Nope, can't happen to you, you're the Messiah, you're supposed to win." And Jesus says, "Get behind me, you're thinking like people think." He had the wrong, Peter had the wrong idea of the Messiah. I think this woman had a better idea of where Jesus was going. She anointed his body for burial. She had a little bit better understanding of where he was going. This alabaster jar of ointment, very costly. Some commentators I ran across said, "Well, this, maybe it's a symbol of the costly oil of faith that we lavishly pour out on Jesus." Nonetheless, she was extravagant in pouring this oil, this ointment on Jesus' head, breaking it, pouring it out, the text said. These are words that for me flashback, or flash forward rather, to the Passover narrative later, where Jesus breaks the bread and pours out the wine, pours out his blood. So this could be a symbolic foreshadowing of Jesus' extravagant gestures of giving his body to be broken and his blood to be poured out. So many see in her actions, a demonstration, a symbolic foreshadowing of the Eucharist. In addition, Jesus says, "What she has done will be spoken in remembrance of her, in memory of her, in preparing Jesus' body for burial in his way. She's prepared it for a death that will be life-giving." As I said, can be interpreted as a eucharistic gesture of breaking and pouring forth. It's for this that she's kept in remembrance. Her alabaster jar, very expensive jar, expensive contents. And the next passage is that Jesus sends the disciples into Jerusalem. They're looking for a man with a clay pot, with a water pot. This is as they go in to prepare the Passover meal for him. Her alabaster jar, his clay pot, her pouring out the expensive ointment, him with a simple pot with simple water. I wonder if there's a connection there. Paul points out in Corinthians, "That we carry the light of God, this glory of the face of God, in earthen vessels, that the transcendent power may be shown to belong to God and not to us." Her expensive vessel, the clay pot later. So if we're clay pots carrying that costly oil of faith, if we're clay pots carrying that light of Christ, I wonder if our pots are cracked enough as it were for the light to show forth. We need Jesus to show forth, are we humble enough to let his light show? Now the chapter moves on a little bit after the Passover meal, I'm sorry, before the Passover meal. We find out that Jesus has agreed to betray Jesus. Judas has agreed, Judas has agreed to betray Jesus. And I often wonder, well, what was going through his mind? In John, we find that he was the keeper of the money bag for the group. So if this ointment had been sold, as the passage there says, "For three hundred denarii," which would be about three hundred days' wages, that money bag would have been quite fat. It says in another place that Judas used to pilfer that. So maybe he was a little disappointed that didn't get to happen. I think there could be another thought in his mind too, about he had seen Jesus exercise his power. He had seen how he had honor amongst the people. Maybe he wanted to force Jesus into a place where he would exercise that power to save himself, and in process of that would become that victorious political Messiah that Judas may be wanted. Judas was gonna be disappointed, he had the wrong idea. In the midst of all this, as things kind of going downhill toward the passion as it were, we find the Last Supper, we find the Passover. As I pointed out, chapter fourteen starts with a conspiracy, discussion of conspiracy to kill him, the anointing for death, Judas' arrangement of betrayal. But now, we find the Passover meal, which seems to occur as usual. Now, the Passover, as you may recall, is celebrated every year in the spring in memory to make present again the memory of Israel's deliverance from sin and slay, deliverance from slavery in Egypt. We as Christians take that as a sign of deliverance from sin. And so this Passover meal proceeded as usual until Jesus holds up the bread and identifies it with his body. He holds up the chalice and identifies it with his blood. "The blood of the covenant," Jesus said, "which is poured out for many." If you recall the first Passover in Egypt, that occurred after all the plagues, before the last plague occurred, just before the people came out. The last plague, of course, was, which was with all the firstborn of Egypt died. And in preparation for that, Moses told the people of Israel, "Get a Passover lamb, slaughter it in a certain way. The blood then shall be put on the doorposts and the lintel of their door, it's a sign." Exodus thirteen, "The blood shall be a sign for you upon the houses where you are. When I see the blood, I will Passover you, and no plague shall fall upon you to destroy you," says the Lord. And later in Exodus, after they're in the desert and Moses is setting up the first sacrifices, Moses took the blood of the bull, the he had just sacrificed, and threw it on the people and said, "Behold, the blood of the covenant, which the Lord has made with you in accordance with all these words." So when Jesus referred to the blood of the covenant, these are thoughts that would go through the good Hebrew mind of those days. He calls his blood the blood of the new covenant. I just described for you the blood of the old covenant. The new covenant blood is shed for many, it's shed for us, and it's Jesus' new way of being, of service, his new way, which is service. If you recall in Mark, chapter ten, we talked about how the Son of Man came not to be served, but to serve, and to give his life a ransom for many. In Isaiah, there's a passage called "The Suffering Servant," where the prophet is talking about who we take to be Jesus as we look back on it. And he talks about the way this suffering servant would suffer and serve. Says he was oppressed, this is Isaiah fifty-three. "Oppressed and afflicted, did he open not his mouth? He was like a lamb that was led to slaughter, and like a sheep before its shearers is dumb, so he opened not his mouth. He makes himself an offering for sin. By his knowledge shall the righteous one, my servant, make many to be accounted righteous, and he shall bear their iniquities, because he poured out his soul to death. He was numbered with the transgressors, yet he bore the sins of many." Isaiah talking about the suffering Messiah, who we now take to be a prophetic description of what Jesus was going through here. And of course, the passion is the next thing that happens. But before I leave this section, there's a ray of hope in there that I had missed until I studied it further, where Jesus says, "I shall not drink again the fruit of the vine until that day when I drink it new in the kingdom of God." If you recall, last time Cindy led us in a little bit of a look at the parable that Jesus told of the vineyard and the wicked tenants. Remember that parable where the landowner had set up the vineyard, put the wall around it, planted it, raised the watchtower, and then leased it out to tenants? And when the time came, he sent his servants to get the fruit of the vineyard. And of course, the wicked tenants killed them all and kept the fruit for themselves. In the Old Testament, in the Old Hebrew scriptures, Israel is described by the prophets as being the vineyard of God, where God had settled up and expected good fruit. But listen here to a description of that from Isaiah, chapter five. Isaiah says, "Let me sing for my beloved, a love song concerning his vineyard. My beloved had a vineyard on a very fertile hill. He digged it and cleared it of stones, and planted it with choice vines. He built a watchtower in the midst of it, and hewed out a wine vat in it. He looked for it to yield grapes, but it yielded wild grapes. It yielded wild grapes." Sounds very much like the parable Jesus told, except Jesus has a little different. He doesn't refer to wild grapes, he refers to the grapes, the fruit. The master wanted the fruit, it was good fruit. The issue was the wicked tenants that were keeping the master from getting to the fruit. Jesus in this passage, I quoted out of the Passover, is pointing out he will again drink the fruit of the vine new in the kingdom of God. He's saying, "There will come a time when the fruit of the vineyard of Israel, of us, of the church, would be directly accessible to the Father." As the passion story unfolds, we see the end result of that is that the veil of the temple is torn apart, and we now have direct access into the very throne room of God by the blood of the lamb that was shed, the blood of Jesus. He shall drink the blood of the new wine, the fruit, in the kingdom. There will come a time, there is a time now, when we are directly accessible to God. That word of encouragement, I find that a word of encouragement anyway. So as we pointed out, the Passover, Last Supper is bracketed by predictions of betrayal. Judas agreeing to, and then the passage about predicting Jesus' denial. And Peter, Peter's denial of Jesus. "Peter, better watch what you do." There's that word "watch" again. Let's talk about Gethsemane a little bit. And there's two betrayals, at least, that happened here. The first here is a icon of Jesus in prayer, and he's the dark figure up there kind of in the middle. It's a dark time for him. And the disciples are asleep. They are not able to stay with him and watch with him as he calls them to do. They betray him, they fall away. Now, these are the same three disciples, Peter, James and John, that Jesus had taken with him two previous times. This is the third instance in Mark, where they're pulled aside for something. First, chapter five, the raising of Jairus' daughter, the twelve-year-old girl. The second time was in chapter nine, at the Transfiguration, and then here, in the garden. And when Mark does something in threes, it's often the middle one that we ought to pay attention to as being real significant. So let's compare the Transfiguration to this event. At the Transfiguration, Jesus was radiant and dazzling. Here, he's troubled and distressed. Transfiguration, he was up on a mountain, here he falls to the ground. Transfiguration, he was blessed by the Father. Here, he cries out to the Father, "That if possible, take this very cup away from me." Transfiguration, Peter is celebrating it, saying he wants to stay there. Here, Peter's asleep, three times Jesus comes to him. And Jesus calls him by his old name, "Simon Peter, could you not stay awake and watch for an hour with me?" That business of, "Father, can you take this cup away from me?" Now, Jesus consumed that cup, that cup being the crucifixion. Remember, again in chapter ten, where James and John came to him and said, "You know, we want to sit one on the right and one on the left when you come to your kingdom." And Jesus says, "Can you drink the cup that I will?" And they say, "Certainly, Lord, of course we can." And he says, "Yes, indeed you will." And now we see what that cup means. And of course, in the case of most of the disciples, they were martyred along with, as Jesus was. And of course, that cup that Jesus is consuming is linked to the Passover Eucharist that was just described. Jesus comes to them three times and finds them sleeping. If you look there in the back of the slide on the right, you can see the crowd coming under Judas' guidance to take Jesus. Of course, the betrayal, when Judas leads the crowd over and they kiss Jesus. Judas kisses him as the sign. And at least one of Jesus' disciples is armed, takes off the ear of the high priest, if I remember right. I think he was aiming to cut the man's head off and just sort of missed. There's a prophecy in Zechariah. "Awake, O sword, against my shepherd, against the man who stands next to me," says the Lord of hosts. "Strike the shepherd that the sheep may be scattered." Here, the shepherd being Jesus, is taken away, and the sheep being the disciples, all scatter. And there's a reference to that young man that had simply the robe on, and then they snatched the robe and he ran away naked. One commentator I ran into said that that was probably, that could have been viewed as Jesus' guardian angel. Jesus is abandoned. And now we move into the trial of Jesus. The identity of Jesus is on trial. Who is this man? So we've talked a lot about the society of those age, of that age, as in, you had to work to get your status, and status was something, if you lost it, you were really lost. And Mark presents person whose words and deeds are all out of proportion to the status, to the state he would have held as a simple village artisan. Mark presents him as in fact the honored son of God. And the people honor him and lift him up and recognize that about him, that status, that high status that he had. His opponents could do nothing, as we pointed out, they feared the crowd. So his opponents had to do something about that. They had to destroy the standing of Jesus in the eyes of the people. So they enter into what one commentator has called all these status degradation rituals. I think that commentator had an anthropology background someplace. They're destroying his status, they're relabeling him, they're humiliating him, they're recategorizing him as a person, as a social deviant. So they proceed to mock and denounce him. Remember, they're seeking witnesses against him. They're trying to rewrite the They're trying to rewrite the person's history, his past, to show that he in fact was a deviant all alone, trying to destroy his public credibility and identity. Of course, Jesus is now abandoned by his core group. They blindfold him, they strike him from behind, they mock him as a prophet, blindfolded him, hit him, and said, "Hey, who hit you? You're a prophet, tell me." They spit on him, they reviled and insulted him in many other ways, and make him appear powerless. This continues in spades in the next chapter, in chapter 15, which we get to next time. And Jesus appears before the high priest now. And the high priest asks him, "Are you the Christ, the Son of the Blessed?" And Jesus said, "I am. And you will see the Son of Man sitting at the right hand of power and coming with the clouds of heaven." And the high priest accuses him of blasphemy. Is it really blasphemy? I can see why he might think that. But when you look up the technical definition in Leviticus, which I'm sure the scribes were prone to do, blasphemy is to curse God. To call yourself a Messiah would say, "I'm a person at God's service." Of course, if you're those wicked tenants, that could be a very threatening thing. But in and of itself, it's not a term hostile to God. Jesus calling himself the Son of God, any pious Jew, religious Jew might be able to say that, as we could say, "We're all children of God." So maybe Mark's point there was to show that the high priest really wasn't familiar with or didn't care or didn't respect these aspects of Jewish tradition. He was indifferent to them. He was an appointment of the Romans, as I think we've talked about before. The high priest and his cohorts were in bed with the Romans, in cohorts with the Romans. So they weren't really the people that God wanted there. In that parable of the vineyard, they were one of the bad tenants. And then the last denial in this chapter, where Peter denies Jesus. So we saw the high priest looked and found false witnesses against Jesus. None of their stories ever really held together. Later, Pilate will condemn Jesus by misrepresenting his identity. Remember, he puts that sign on the cross, the king of the Jews. He said, "Oh, this man wants to be the political king, we gotta get rid of him." He misrepresents Jesus. And here, Peter is called on to witness for Jesus, and he refuses to witness at all. Matter of fact, he denies, "I never knew the man." He refuses to witness at all. Jesus' identity is being maligned, and Peter refuses to say a word. Mark dramatizes the fact that in denying Jesus, Peter is denying his very self. He goes away very, very sad. And Mark, chapter 14 ends, and the story continues in 15. We need to stop the study at some point. This is a very terrible spot, but we will pick it up next week. Keep in mind what I've said about Peter denying Jesus, about the degradation rituals, about Jesus' destiny. Thank you very much for listening. God bless you.